I wasn't on the board then, do you mind just going through what's going on weekly?
So this is a flexible subdivision.
Uh huh.
Um, this was the undeveloped lot, this was the historic house that got preserved as part of the flexible subdivision.
What year was that stored?
This was, uh, well, yours, the house?
Yes.
Eighteen sixties, I believe.
Yeah, I don't.
The original.
It was moved from, um, it was on the other side of the Mouse Pike and then they built the Mouse Pike and it, so they had to move it.
Right. Yeah. This is the Pews House.
Yes.
Yes, I remember the Pews.
It was.
That's why I was wondering.
So then this was the undeveloped lot which they got, for which they got, say, plan approval but haven't built yet. So that's this area here.
Yeah, and then, so, but they've done some things.
Yes.
So they built that road.
So this road comes up to about here.
Okay.
Right now.
Alright.
It doesn't curve all the way around.
Okay.
And then, other than, and there is a line of, of trees here.
What are the trees that are there?
Pines.
What are the?
Pine, pine trees that were part of the, um, special permit.
Pines? Yeah.
There are trees in there, but also a line of bushes or other trees that were also part of the special permit.
Yes.
Emi, it's really hard for us.
Sorry.
Boom, 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 boom.
These pines.
Those pines, alright, so that's at the end of the road.
And then these, yeah.
And, but they're, aren't they supposed to be paralleling the road or no? Or, we're hardly on the site plan.
Currently, the road is ending right there and, it's a driveway. The driveway right there, and it's supposed to come around this way, so they do, they do parallel at the end.
Okay. Okay, and, and the pile of rocks to the left, that's going to get moved to make way for the, for the driveway or what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, sorry, so, so just to get a, like, um, position. The way the camera is facing would be coming then west, is that correct?
Coming toward the Pike, down the driveway, to the down slope.
The driveway is coming up, he explained, and then around the rocks would be west.
Around the rocks.
Right, we're coming towards here, the camera lens is coming into us?
Relatively. The camera lens is facing this way.
Yeah, the trees are here.
It starts here, looking down this driveway, basically.
Trees are here, they're there.
And then one way.
Right there.
And looking.
Hi.
And looking here.
Yeah, I mean, we, we kind of, my, my son's in.
Could you just identify yourself, uh?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm, um, Rosemary Donovan Lyden, I live at fifty Corwood Drive.
Okay.
I live in the yellow house above.
Where is the yellow house?
That would be, um, straight above.
Could you point it out, Emi, where it is, where fifty Corwood is, or is it off the map or?
It is off of these maps.
So it's, so it's straight?
But let me see if I can get.
Well, that's why I was kind of trying to get the direction, like, um, like.
Yeah, it's really hard to tell what we're looking at, Emi.
We've got a map.
The road splits off.
So, um.
Is there some culvert sign? Is that?
Right, so if you go forward and you pass a yellow house and the road splits, I'm the yellow house before the road splits.
Before the split, on the, on the left.
Yes.
Yes, so, okay, so.
I'm gonna bring it up, so it brings it up.
I'm on, right. Yeah. So the, the Shaylers used to be in our house and the Shayler vein was their driveway.
I know it's not.
Were you there when the Torres went in?
There's, there it is.
So fifty is here.
No, not the Torres.
Okay.
In, in the, in the.
Here's the, this is the subject property right here.
Zoom in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So as far as the.
No, who can zoom in more?
And where's the old house?
The number fifty.
Fifty, which is, which is right there, that's six, this is seventy-five.
Yep, that's it, that's it, yep.
Fifty's right there, okay.
Yes.
Alright.
And where is the house we're talking about?
Right here.
Right there.
Yes, yes.
They cut off of the culvert.
Okay.
And the road goes through down that.
Down this net.
Down that, through.
Panhandle.
Yeah.
Right.
The driveway.
Yes. Right.
And seventy-six is the old Pew house.
Seventy-seven.
So there's the trees there.
Oh, got it.
There's a line of pine trees.
Excellent, that's, that's better, okay.
There's the line of bushes.
Yeah, they're the bushes that were planted.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, yeah, here's the culvert, there's a piece of ledge up right over here.
Is that the clearing for the house?
And this is a clearing. What's that?
Is that the clearing for the new house?
Up here.
Yeah, it was a, it was a transport, so we'd be in clear.
Yeah.
And that's where the new house is, is going to go?
Yes.
Right, I think the previous applicants were, uh, were, you weren't the previous, were you?
We were.
Yeah.
Cause there was a builder involved, I still remember it.
Yeah, there was.
Okay, um, and.
I just have a couple of my prime questions.
Yes.
Um, and just like, I believe I remember this vaguely, but I hear that this same place wouldn't be, if we give approval, it was.
Two thousand eleven. At, beginning of two thousand eleven.
You have a set clause on what you need to build?
Yes, that's why we're, that's why we're doing this, Sue.
Well, that's, that was clear, um, so if, because of the expiration of the special permit, basically, right?
Well, of the, of the site plan approval.
Of, right, of the site plan approval?
Yes.
Okay, and just because I'm a little bit about this, uh, does that mean that they go for nine years or how long do they go for?
So how long does a site plan approval go for?
Yeah.
Last question, two years?
Or ten or seven or how many years?
Two.
Two.
For five, I thought, or two?
Two.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, has there been any work going on beyond, um, is it, uh, is time the entire, the time after the two-year expiration?
No, the answer is no.
Well, um, there was, um, there was a situation where I called the police because in front of my house, a couple of months ago, there was, um, three large, really large trucks with flatbeds with, um, tons of really nice trees on them and it was from like a A1 tree service and I, I called the police because they were kind of taking up the road and I didn't know why they were in front of my house and, and I was kind of concerned, their rule of thumb is like an emergency vehicle getting by and, um, I was also concerned to say, hey, where did these kind of healthy trees come from? So, um, I called them and, um, then I went back because the people that drove the trucks didn't speak very good English, so I went back to speak with the guy and he had said it was from seventy-ish around there, he was very vague. He, I recorded, I was so alarmed and, you know, alerted that I ended up recording my whole conversation with the man because here was a man in my neighborhood and, you know, he just chopped down three flatbeds.
He chopped them down or he was bringing them in?
Nope, they were, they were chopped down, I mean, they were studded, there was no, uh, root, there was no end.
Cut.
So they were cut, I wasn't clear when you were speaking.
Oh, excuse me.
It sounded like he was bringing them in and I couldn't understand his story.
Oh, no, yes, yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
And so when I, when I spoke with the man, he became very vague and he said, oh, I'm in charge of this, dah dah dah, and then he even backed up more and said, I'm just a friend, I've gotta go, we gotta go, and they were out of there and I just called the police. I don't know who they have to do with, but, you know.
Do you know where the trees came from on the trucks?
No, no, they, he said he was parked down in, uh, the driveway of seventy. He was not parked on Bullard in front of Gail or Randy's house, Gail Mozak or Randy Cassell's. He was down, you know, uh, observing and supervising.
Well, let, let, let's ask, does this have anything to do with your property at all?
We have, we do have, I don't know, did you notice any trees?
I did not notice any cut trees on there, there's much of stuff.
I don't know when this happened, but, I mean, the seventy Corwood was sold, I think it was twenty fourteen maybe? Um, so.
Okay, so you don't live there.
We haven't, no, we don't.
No.
No.
So after we.
The police would know, I mean, I don't know, I mean.
Oh.
So that.
We're, there doesn't seem, appear to be any trees recently are cut down and we certainly haven't been billed for any tree work?
Well, who owns, do, 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 do the people that live now in seventy Corwood, do they own that parcel or no?
No.
Yes.
Oh, they own their parcel.
Yeah, they own the seventy Corwood parcel, we own the, the.
Okay, so they owns, they own seventy?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that the one with the building on it, or is that built?
Yes, yeah, yes, that's right.
Yes, seventy is the one with the building on it.
Alright, good, so the house, so, yes, that's Corwood's house.
So, probably.
And so seventy-three is not built and that's what we're referring to now, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, so we, I don't know, maybe.
So it's probably nothing.
I don't know how we'll find out, um. I, I noticed there were some concrete culvert manhole, uh, structures that were stacked up on the, is that gonna go into the driveway extension? Is that what's going on for those?
I think that, I think those were actually built in the, they will be, they'll probably be disposed of by the.
You're selling the parcel, is that, is that your plan? As is?
Yeah, we have someone interested in it, they want, they want the building permit.
Building permit?
Yeah.
Alright, well.
Well, I mean, they're, they're gonna pull the building, they want the, they want the paperwork, you know, to do this.
So they want the, the flexible subdivision brought up to current status so that they can do whatever they're, they wanna do on that site and.
Well, they wanna do, they wanna build the plan that was previously approved if we can get that re-approved again.
Well, the, the, do you have the, what was, that, we didn't go through site plan review on this, did we?
We did.
You did.
You did?
Haven't, yeah.
Okay.
What, what are the spec, special conditions are?
So, this is the site plan approval.
Right, but we need to see what it was, um.
Uh, do you mean in plans?
Yeah.
Those, that's the approved set I have up here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I don't see a house decided in there.
Here we go. Okay. Scroll down to that.
Okay.
So, that is the floor plan, those are the elevations.
Can you go back to the floor plan, please?
Yep.
Okay, and, um, did we go through the whole drill with landscaping and?
Yes.
Who did it?
The whole drill with landscaping, there was revisions to the lighting, um, done, you know, the original specs as I went through them had, you know, one of the things that stood out was they had downlights in it and whatnot, those were taken out in the second set of this.
Okay.
It has been reviewed, I, you know, I did look over that in October. We did have a planting plan, a landscaping plan that was approved.
How about a well?
That condition is not in there, the condition for the well is not in there, um, I don't believe the generator condition is in there, there's some standard ones.
There's been some changes since, since two thousand eleven.
Yeah. Yeah.
We need to review the decision.
Yeah, so there are some things that, I mean, it probably would be best to just re-put this into our current template.
Right.
Is what I was, I went through, that's what it came down to.
Okay. Yeah. Probably changes in, in stormwater runoff and that sort of thing, I would imagine. So, water, water's gone under the bridge since two thousand eleven.
There are wetlands on the, on the.
All construction requirements online.
Yes.
Yes.
There are wetlands on the property too?
Yes.
And those need to be looked at again?
That, they have to submit, um, they have to refile the conservation commission for any order of conditions.
So they, they propose to reproduce exactly what's on this site plan?
Does it have to be re-curved?
That I don't know, I don't know.
Department of Health, is it?
Oh, um, so I spoke with the person downstairs, the Board of Health.
Wendy?
And they had me, um, contact our engineer, our old engineers, and they will be submitting a new plan.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, so, so, Concom sign off and Board of Health sign off.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Hmm.
Emi, do you wanna bring up, has there been, you know, some, uh, a lot of communication actually from Dave or is it maybe everything isn't exactly as it seems?
Yeah. We can do that now.
This is a ten-year-old, basically, site plan approval and it's from two thousand eleven, thousand nine, okay, I exaggerated to the upside, nine years.
Eight, eight.
Yeah.
That's, okay, never mind, I was never gonna, darn you, but, um, it seems like a very long time, a lot of things have changed. Whereas, you know, us and our procedures, I, um, could we, um, you know, visit this property again and see what's going on, you know, and, 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 what's happening or has happened so that we can make sure there's, put in enforcement and we just pass over forty-four O three and we know what happened there regarding, maybe it's not ever quite the way they, they don't take any enforcement.
Well, Sue, why don't we, there, there's a message that nobody can understand because it's split between two pages, but on the screen right now.
Yes.
Uh, that's from you.
That's from you?
That's from, that's my lever and, and she kind of, we know.
Can we read that into the record?
Yep, that's what I was gonna do, so. Hi Susan, I'm sorry to trouble you on your personal email, but I just received in the US Mail just now, five PM, January seventh, and there's a planning board hearing for the above-named property scheduled for the day after tomorrow, Wednesday, uh, Tuesday. The notice is due to January second at the planning board and postmarked January third. I checked the Western Town car religiously, to my knowledge, there was no notice last week. I am leaving town tomorrow early morning for Canada, cannot be at the meeting. I understand this is a revisit of the two thousand eleven approval, but I absolutely have concerns about this project because I believe that among other things, they are not in compliance with the terms of the original approvals, specifically among other things, the conservation swell has not been maintained at all or other stormwater requirements and the vegetation that was to screen the driveway and lighting from the subdivision from into my rear windows and those of others either was not planted, did not take, or was insufficient. In addition, the approval specifically required that construction vehicles not be parked on Bullard Road, i.e. in front of my house and blocking the intersection of Bullard and Corwood, a bus route, and that noise reduction be a zirk. I can testify that this provision has been blatantly disregarded on a regular basis over the last eight years. In fact, I have actually been threatened by various contractors on more than one occasion who are parked in front of my house and driveway for extended periods with heavy equipment, some outside of town hours, town ordinance noise hours were working in seventy and seventy-three Corwood. Ube, my request to postpone this hearing to comply with ample notice of that I would tend to detail my concerns, but if not, I hope that you can arrange to place this note in the record. When I return next, next week, I would be more prepared to, I'll be prepared to more thoroughly detail my concerns. Randy Cassell, one hundred Bullard two.
Guys, what do you think we should do?
I think we should go revisit this like it's a brand new one. It's been, it's been, it's not like one or two years, it's been eight years.
Yeah, and we need to have the engineer and architect present, um, or someone needs to present drawings to us.
Yeah.
And the conditions have changed.
And there's a reason that our, the site plan approval expired in two years.
Um, I guess I'm also concerned because this letter says for the last couple of years, work has been ongoing and yet there's been no approval, the flexible subdivision has not been in, you know, it's active.
There's been no work on this.
There's been no work in the last.
So I don't know, they're getting mixed up with the same thing you got mixed up with or?
I think that, that when she maybe was referencing that and I, I can't be certain, but I would say that there's kind of two things going on, is that there's many violations, um, you know, perhaps people go out and say, okay, we'll abide by this, this, and we'll be in compliance and then, in all honesty, who is going out to make sure they're compliant with what they're doing? And, you know, if I go outside to say, hey, you can't park on the street here, yeah, what are they gonna do? And, you know, this is exactly what she was doing and.
Excuse me, I don't understand what's going on here because we're talking about a property where there should be no construction and the owners are saying there's no construction and you and your neighbor are saying that there's construction and noise, so either there's some confusion, you and your neighbor are confused by activity on a different property nearby or someone's not telling the truth, so.
Well, well.
So, maybe maybe talking about when you were originally constructing the road for seventy, like, before seventy was, was.
That was a long time ago.
That was a long time. Nothing's.
Well, that's said eight years. Yeah, this is the past eight years. Yeah, she said, she didn't say recently.
Oh, I thought, I thought there was a comment about recent.
Over the last eight years.
On a regular basis, though.
On a regular basis, okay.
And, and when was, what you saw?
And, and there was, and there was work done on Corwood and on Bullard and when there was work done there and when there was work done on the ladder part going down into the driveway of Corwood to seventy Corwood, they were parked all along, uh, in front of my house and up towards Bullard and they weren't supposed to be.
But we're not talking about seventy Corwood.
Okay, well.
I guess the only thing I would say is that we were able to sell seventy Corwood, we had passed whatever regulations that there were, we abided by everything. We've been remiss on not being able to move forward with the, um, special permit, I mean, the site plan approval, but the special permit, we abided by everything, we got every sign off in order to split the property and sell seventy Corwood. In terms of seventy-three, all we're here for is to, again, to get what you already approved recertified. If you need, you know, an engineer or an architect to come back, that's fine. I, when I called Emi, I asked him, you know, who do we need? He thought, he, he thought and advised me that it probably, we just re-present what you already approved. We're not looking for any changes, if you wanna add whatever other new conditions to bring it up to your template, that's fine with us. I've gone to the Board of Health to try to get the septic updated from, um, I think you said her name is Wendy? She said that all it takes is an engineer to go and update the plan to the two thousand fifteen, I guess there were changes then, um, those standards and those will be submitted and, again, we just want to move forward.
Uh, here's what I would suggest that we do, um, schedule a, a site visit because right now we're looking at photographs of trees that don't have any context, so it'd really be helpful for us to just see what's actually out there. Um, and in the meantime, you know, have you, the process start with the Board of Health and with the Conservation Commission so that's running along and we can get some feedback on those parts of the, of the puzzle and then reschedule another hearing session after the sidewalk and, and see where we are, what our consultants recommend might be added to the conditions or might be changed from what's, what was originally decided. Emi mentioned a couple of provisions that were, that are now standard with us that were, perhaps weren't eight years ago. Um, and, um, and then that would, I think, would satisfy everybody's concerns and then we have one more hearing session and that's, that's the end of it, and that's the way I think it works.
So you don't have to look at the architecture and landscaping and the lighting or?
Well, no, I, I think it would be great if we could have David and Kim take a look at those.
But they, do they have to bring in their architects and their landscape architects?
Do they just have the plans?
Well, let's just start by having David and Kim take a look, see if there's anything that, any flags for them that they would want more information on or perhaps recommend something different and I, I doubt if, if the architecture is gonna be changed, so it would probably be the plantings and, and whatever site engineering, uh, changes might or might not be necessary. So we'd get some information from our consultants on what we, on, on, on things to look at or recommend changing and then we hold a second hearing and wrap it up.
Okay, did you require?
Can we do one more thing?
Sure.
So seven was the flexible subdivision, um, parcel that was already sold?
Correct.
Can we, do we have, can we just check the file to make sure everything was signed off on as far as conditions for that?
I, yeah, we can, we can check it, but, I mean.
Just to make, you know, because we're going to be down there anyways.
It was released, so I've got it.
Right.
I guess they, they, they have C of O, so my guess is that you're okay.
Okay, alright, I was just thinking, we're going to be down there anyways.
Sure. I mean, might as well crush the base.
So, did you require dark sky compliance lighting at that time?
I believe we did, yes.
Yes.
But even if you did, I think.
It changed a lot of fixtures.
Yeah, you're not gonna be putting in the same fixtures today that you would've put in eight years ago,
Well, yeah, that.
So I think that at the very least, um, the architect or possibly the landscape architect needs to select new lighting for the house, because we need to know how many lumens, um, each light fixture is.
And what is the point?
Sky compliant.
That's a good point. In those days, we were going like.
Right, it's true, it's been a long time.
Back in two thousand.
Nothing changes faster than lighting.
Back in two thousand eleven, we were specifying wattage, now we're specifying lumens and those are the kinds of changes that we're talking about, so take a look at those things. Um, and Sue's right, probably none of the fixtures are, are being, that we, that were submitted before.
Probably not be, it's not.
So, we just need to bring it up to date and polish it up a little bit and, um, and take a look at the site and see what the issues are in three dimensions and schedule a hearing, continue it to another date, which would be what date?
Well, okay, let me look at the calendar because the next time we can do this is, hold on, let me see.
Architects probably have to update the drawings anyways, stretch code and all of that.
Stretch, well, yeah.
Well, you know, you get revisions every couple of years, you know, you can't just pull out the old plans usually.
So we have.
It's not our purview.
We have time to do this on February twenty-seventh, if it's possible, the rest of the times are pretty, are pretty full.
Alright, so we can schedule a sidewalk between now and then.
Between now and then, yeah, I'll, I'll notice it and then we'll just.
Probably Concom will have had a chance to weigh in and, and so will Board of Health, so. So we can wrap it all up in one night.
Alright, so we're gonna continue to February?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, thank you.
Okay.
And sidewalk data's gonna be forthcoming and I'll, I'll notice that, so people get, people will get a mail notice of it and will, since it was brought up, I'll, you'll publish it, so.
Okay. So we need to, somebody needs to make a motion, we'll continue to the twenty, actually, we don't need a motion, that's fine. The twenty-seventh is, when we'll continue to and we'll let you know when the sidewalk is. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. What'd you say? What, Sue? Did you say something?
Can't hear you.
Talking heads.
She's gone.
Gone.
Yeah, is, is your wife home?
Yes.
Okay. So you're not writing off the cell?
No, I don't know why this doesn't.
Alright, now, what's happening with skating club?
I don't know where their, I don't know where their representatives are.
What's this unapproved tree?
So, let me show you what that is. So this, this is the tree right down here, let me show you what it looks like.
The one that's very tight to the.
Yeah, so it's very tight to the limit of work, it's this one right here.
Yeah.
That they cut down, that they weren't supposed to cut down. So, they per, are proposing a, let me zoom in on that.
Are those the only ones they've cut down?
That is, well, they've cut down other approved ones.
Right, but, right, but unapproved.
Unapproved, that is the only one, yeah.
What's happening on the downhill lot, because you can see stuff going on from Route twenty.
So on the downhill lot, they've, there was a lot of, um, like, construction materials that were just there and.
Like down there.
Debris that they've been clearing out.
Oh, okay, that's what's going on?
Yeah, that's what's going on down.
Because as I remember it, that driveway going down to Route twenty, that was sort of a possible future driveway, but not something that they were gonna build, this.
That's not, well, it's, it's there now, they were gonna take it out, but yeah, this is a whole other.
So they're gonna take that out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is. So AC, I believe those are. Oh, white fir, and that's gonna be, that's gonna be a fourteen to sixteen foot white fir. Is what was it?
And that's the only one?
That's the only one.
Yeah. So, we're just.
So that's.
We're taking a look at that one tree.
Yep. All right, that's the first part of it. The other thing they've asked is to amend the limit of work here, particularly here. They kept, they kept it originally tighter to the roadway, but this is where there's a lot of scrub basically in here, bushes and that, all that construction materials were stored. So they want to move it out to here.
Construction materials from what process?
I don't know, I have no idea why it was there.
Have you taken a peek there?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it just like debris?
Yeah.
It was from the people who owned the property before.
They were doing demo and things were falling apart, they just tossed them.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
This is the property where the two lots were combined.
Well, yeah, pieces of lots were combined to make this.
Well, what, there's, are there no trees in that area?
No.
None?
No, this is all bushes here, unless like.
It's all bushes?
Yeah.
Are any of them young trees that should be saved?
They're all, I mean, if there are, they're, they're the under the six inch or even, they're more like saplings here.
They just want to clean up, is that the idea?
Yeah.
I mean, right now, when you drive down there, it's wooden.
It's wooden with, yeah, and it is.
And you don't want to get your.
You can see up that hill.
You can see up that hill some, I mean, I think this is, this is probably somewhat of a condition similar to, like, you know, dare bring it up again, Two Fields Pond, when that lower understory stuff comes out.
You see a lot.
It'll be a lot more, more visible.
You mean less visible?
No, more, like you'll be able to see through, from Route twenty, you'll be able to see up through to the house higher if the, if understory comes out.
Are they taking it out, or are they just cleaning up?
It sounds like there's, they're cleaning up and, and removing the understory.
They do, they want to do both?
Yes, remove brush from here.
And why do they want to remove brush when they didn't want to do that before, I don't understand. I thought they just wanted to clean up.
Do you have any pictures? Because honestly, it does seem to be, I mean, cleaning up debris, hooray. Picking out pickets and brush, uh, not so.
Okay.
Still some bears too.
Yeah, I mean. As Sue intends, that cuts down the noise from Route twenty, so I don't, don't know why they want to do it in that sense. You know, I don't want that turning into a lawn.
But they want to pull that out, they want to have, they want to pull out the existing scrubs, that's the understory.
Scrub is, is a term that's sort of a gerocket or.
Yeah.
But it's actually.
But what is it exactly? No. What, well, that's a good question, what, what are they gonna do?
Here's the landscape plan. So, actually, the landscape plan is really only covering this upper lot, not lot.
That's right.
Right.
Lot one was gonna be left alone.
Lot one was gonna be left alone.
So now it's gonna be opened up, they're doing a lot of work on lot one that wasn't proposed before.
Does it say it's gonna be left alone, is it?
No, because they're changing the limit of work.
It was gonna be left alone because of the limit of work.
I mean, and that's not the first thing, I mean, if they've taken out a basis, but.
Why do you see any reason to do it?
Yeah.
I just don't see any real, I mean.
This doesn't, again.
Yeah, but it doesn't show us what, actually, what it's gonna look like when it's finished.
I mean, I can see, easily see them, yes, it's great picking up the debris, but I don't see any purpose.
So it's starting here, this is this area here, it starts here, this is kind of just, since grasses and shrubs, this tree. This is what it looks like going down.
I think that's fine, I mean, that's more than scrub, that's more than scrub.
That's not bittersweet.
Yeah, those are trees.
This side is.
Yeah.
That's not what they're touching, though, this is, it's this side.
Well, I see trees on the left. I mean, it looks like basically right by the road, you call it, there's a lot of tiles.
This side, this is the other side. Is that the right side? Whoa, Emi, you go by these pictures so fast, what, what are we looking at there?
That's not the side, right?
That is. This area here.
Okay, do you have any on the other side?
Yeah.
Because I see dark dots which look to me to be trees on the left, on that plant.
Too many, yeah, rotate, yeah.
Yeah, we just looked at that one.
Yeah, that's, those.
That's the only one?
No, that's some of it, that's, that's one of them, but that's this area here, so. This is where it comes back, this is where the limit of work is coming back in.
Right, got it.
Yeah.
Well, no, they're changing it all the way down.
I don't, I don't see why we would want to.
Yeah.
I mean, clean up is one thing.
Isn't that great, you know, cats on the head, that's great.
Yeah, if they change the limit of work, then they have to do more planting, seems to be.
Well, we have to go take another look, because we weren't looking at that when we went the first time.
Absolutely not, because the idea was to be, we're gonna absolutely keep it to a minimum, a lot more, they didn't want to touch it at all.
Right.
Okay.
What, what does the dash line mean, is that the limit of work line?
No, this is back of the landscape plan.
Oh.
This is the limit of work line, this solid.
That was what it was.
The solid's a limit of work?
Yeah, the solid is their new proposed limit of work.
Oh, the new proposed?
Yeah.
And the dotted?
Dotted is a one inch foot block that's going to this way.
Oh, I got it.
I mean, it, it does.
What, can you show us the old limit of work line?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought the dash line was the old limit of work.
Hmm, so just around that area?
There, it's running.
Oh, it's right on the, right on the.
Like driveway, yeah.
That's a big difference.
Oh, no, that's a, that's a big difference.
Go back to the new one?
Yeah, so you see the dotted line, it's on the other side of the dotted line.
Yeah, that's huge, where the edge of the driveway is. That's a huge difference.
Yes, it is.
I mean, unless we go take a look and, you know, take another look specifically at that, we're not gonna do it from paper.
Yeah.
They said that they wanted to relanscape that area between the driveway and the new limit of work line.
But why would you, if they're not gonna touch it, it seems all.
They, they weren't gonna do any work at all on lot one.
Right.
Zero.
They're gonna leave it natural.
Yeah.
And that's still what we would like.
And I'm sure the people up top would like that too, because then they get pretty much privacy.
Yeah.
Why would you want to landscape down to Route twenty?
I've got no idea.
You should know.
No, I went the other way, I looked across the street.
This is the limit of work.
Well, just know.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
We planted a tree, you know, or two trees, why are they putting two trees back?
One.
How many did it take down?
One, one double, it's a double leader, but one. One fourteen to sixteen, Kim, Kim looked, they originally proposed a ten to twelve, and Kim and I said, no, that's too small, you took down a bigger tree, put it in fourteen to sixteen.
Okay.
If it needs to be bigger, it needs to be bigger, you know.
Okay.
So that, no problem, I think for anybody with that.
With that.
Probably need to take a look at what the consequences would be of taking out all that vegetation. I can't believe it's all scrub.
It looks suspiciously like a lawn.
Well, it's hard to know what it is.
On quite a slow.
All right.
I can't see anybody mowing it, you know, it's not, I don't see it as a lawn, if, for one thing, if you look at the contours.
Yeah.
To have a lawnmower.
Cheaper moment.
You know, well, anyway.
Yeah.
It would just be nice to have their intent, actually, what they.
Yeah, I don't know why they're, I don't know why nobody's here tonight, I was gonna say. They knew about it, I mean, this is Karen and Jay, they know.
Thomas goes.
I've told them, yeah.
Maybe that's why they're not here. Didn't make any sense.
All right, well, then we can just continue.
All right, so we'll, we'll schedule a sidewalk on this, we can continue.
You want to schedule a sidewalk?
Well, do you want to, or do you want to just say no, then if they really want to, they can come back? Because if they're not here, they don't seem to care that much.
Well, maybe you should have a discussion with them, and if they really want to.
Okay.
Tell them what happened, if they really want to do that. Right.
Okay. Okay, so, but we're gonna continue the hearing anyway, right? Irrespective of whether we have a sidewalk or not.
Assuming they're still interested.
I think we have to, since we're not coming to a conclusion.
I mean, we're only proving the tree, we're not proving anything else.
Yeah, the tree we can agree to, we'll prove that, but, but for the rest of it, we're gonna need to reschedule something.
If, if they're really serious about it, then we need a sidewalk, it's.
They may have changed their mind.
Yeah, that's possible, if they're not here, that's.
It's a good idea.
Well, I mean, the other thing is, you could just say no to, at this point.
No, and then they can come back if they really need it, it's, again, you know.
Okay, no, because we don't have enough information, we don't know what the intent is or anything, so no, for now, they can come in and talk.
All right, so is that everybody, everybody agrees to that?
Fine.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll do that. So somebody move that we accept the tree and, and not accept the clearing on, on the slope?
Salute.
Hold on, favor?
Hi.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
All right, so it's unanimous. Okay, all right. I'm moving on. One way, I saw him.
Jonathan is upstairs right now at the ZBA.
No, but I think I saw Provenzano.
Oh, you did?
I think so, I think he went into the break room.
Oh, is he going to housing?
That's the housing.
I think the tech.
That's right.
Well, are, are we just reviewing the decision?
I've never been on it, I've always been.
No, discussing.
We're discussing, we're discussing the decisions, and part of that is that, is the historical commissions.
Right.
Suggested guidelines for preserving the important parts of the house.
Are they attached to mine?
So here's the flex sub, no, I'm gonna give them all, all kind of separately here. So that's the flex sub. This is the definitive sub.
Tell, tell, we're talking a little too soon.
Sue, I think maybe you should come back just as an audio, and I'll put you on speakerphone, because I don't think, we, there's nothing to look at anymore.
These are the design guidelines.
Well, what's this one?
Sure. Although on this list, too.
Those are the historic, that's the historic guidelines.
Oh, so there's more, oh.
Because it's A and B.
Oh, but you only sent the system.
That's B.
Yeah, because that's the, that's the new one, you guys looked at that on the last one, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, I was sure, all right.
This is a short one, come on.
Yeah.
All right.
Let me touch up on time, see who's there.
I think he's around.
What's he doing in there? Up there.
He gets torn three different ways.
We said it, the commission's thing would be short.
It is.
Short.
Hello. Hey, I'm talking to you on speaker. Can you hear us?
Nobody here?
Okay, that's because no one else is talking.
When you sent this over to Jonathan earlier today, but exhibit B, did Jonathan have any comments?
So Jonathan didn't have comments on, actually, let me pull up what his comments were.
Sure.
He said he wasn't gonna come, my God.
That's fine.
He was, he was supposed to come today.
He was, no, he was, okay, maybe he was.
So this is, this is Jonathan's comments to exhibit A. Let me see if he's included exhibit B in here, I just looked at his exhibit A comments. Oh, yeah, here we go. So I know this is going through it really quick. Here's his. The basic thing is the north wing of the house. That's, they want that as a, as a site plan approval, demolition, whereas these recommend certain parts of it to be a, a special permit. Yes.
Okay, but that, I mean, that's more or less what we discussed with them.
That is what we discussed with them, yes.
But then, but then the historical commission has something on the north wing.
Yes, yeah, so that's what Jon, Jonathan's assets are pretty much all to taking the, having the north wing only requiring site plan approval.
So if you scroll down a little bit to the, the, oh, exhibit. North wing, the four and five take out.
Yeah.
Because it's site plan approval.
Yeah.
And it's not the original?
It, it's not the original section of the house. I, I really hesitate to, to express other people's priorities. So why the north wing is in there, you know, the chairman of the commission, Phyllis Halpern, said that she, she thought, she and the, and Alicia Pryor, who did the, who did exhibit B, thought it was worthwhile to discuss certain features of the north wing that they thought were worthy of preservation. I, I know that it's something that we've, we've just, we've batted around in previous conversations. We're talking about windows and trim and a couple of, and a door, a couple of doors.
Is the north wing that addition that was done in the eighties?
It, there was a, I think it was redone in the eighties, it was, it's older, oh, here we go. Oh, good, okay.
Just in done.
All right.
Just in done. Man of the hour.
Well, I, I pulled into my driveway from, from getting back off the airplane, and four fire trucks in the driveway, gas company.
Everybody there?
And they said, had we not turned this off, this house would have exploded.
So this would have been erased then? So no, unpermitted.
But you're a pushman?
So we wouldn't have discussed this.
I have a new burner in the, in the house, and it, it broke, and.
I would have turned it off.
Because it was leaking gas, I had multiple burners in the house.
How did they know?
My, my dog, my son dropped off the dog at two o'clock.
And he smelled gas.
And, and the police department, he set off the alarm, and the police department killed him.
Set off the alarm, you didn't even smell gas, man, are you lucky.
You are lucky, everyone is lucky.
I'm lucky my son didn't open up the door on the way, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, wouldn't have heard of it.
So you're talking, you're gonna talk to the installer, right?
Um, yeah, I thought he didn't, you know, he, he knew we were having an issue with it, and I tried to get it done before Christmas, but he was just so busy with other stuff, you know, I'm a contractor, you know, I'm sympathetic, and I was all, you sure? This is okay?
You own your house, you family.
You're sympathetic up to the point, your house is low.
Yeah, could you imagine?
No, we don't want to.
So I apologize for being late. That's all right, a good reason. I'm surprised you're here, actually. Well, we, we just sort of started going through your comments, Jonathan, and maybe what we could do is go back to your comments on exhibit A. If you could run through them, because I can't read your writing.
On A, on B four, oh, yeah, right, right up there. I would just say, this, it just says, it says all, they're all subject to planning board review and special permit amendment. I just, or planning board site plan review approval as applicable. There's some places where you say.
That's fine.
That's fine.
You know, the more substantive one is down below, and this is probably where we're looking.
How far is that?
Right, right there.
Are there demolishing, where your marks are?
Yeah, you know, and I don't know what your, your final decision was, but we were saying that if, if the north wing came out, we were looking for that just to be site plan approval, if someone wanted to take that out. So that's, that's what that change is.
So you're saying demolition of the north wing is subject to site plan review approval?
Yeah, where it's not original.
Yeah.
You, you folks would know better than me, I guess it really doesn't go that well with the rest of the house, it's the problem.
Right, so would they have to demolish it in its entirety in order to get site plan approval to work, or could they demolish part of it?
Well, I think anything, I think anything changed probably needs.
Say a portion thereof.
So you're saying portion thereof.
Yeah, but any, all portion thereof, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, we're fine.
I, and I'm not sure I'm gonna do anything with it, but I just wanna have the, that would, that would make that house, if that wing were, if we put a master suite and a garage or whatever on it, and it was done appropriately, it was done nicely, that, that would, that would save the house by itself.
Yeah, we, we did talk about that.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else on exhibit A, Jonathan?
Spotlights. Oh, um, just at the very end of, um, exhibit A was just a clarification of F. Just, uh, a little, I guess a little.
No, just the G.
C lot two. No, I covered that a while. I have to figure out where, where G came. There it is. Okay. Um, I'm just pointing out where, where, you know, where that comes from. As provided with the general bylaws. So, that's not substantive.
Okay. Anything else?
On A, yeah, was it, um, Rob, Rob had, these are things, Rob was, a couple of things he was looking at on the plate.
Okay.
Uh, so where are we looking, Rob?
Um, it would be, um, um, the design guidelines, uh, number C lot two.
Oh, that's all right.
Number two, architectural design, construction and style. So, this has to do with my house, floodlights, spotlights.
So, you have to go to the next page, I think, EMI.
Right here. Replacement of the existing or addition exterior lights should be no more than sixteen thousand lumens total. And floodlight, it's that last sentence, floodlights, spotlights, and the like. And I, I have a bunch of them.
And they were came from hand. They were there thirty-five years.
Yeah. My feeling on that, what, what, what are people's feelings on that?
We don't normally agree them.
But this is, this is not on the new house. This is on my existing.
No, I know. But it's a, it's a two-line subdivision.
We certainly couldn't replace them with our lives.
It says all new or, or, or replacement fixtures. So, if they stay there, they stay there. If you're replacing them, then you should come up to E with everything else.
Yeah. Maybe that just needs to be clarified that that's what.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking for. I don't wanna have to take off what is nothing.
So, then all you need is a comma.
It's all new or replacement.
All you need is a comma then, right?
It says all new or replacement.
Right.
What's wrong with that?
Yeah, but, but.
Right. But then put a comma, make it a comma.
It's a separate sentence.
And say, yeah, make it a comma to put them together and then it should work.
Yeah, fine. Okay. I'm good. Yeah, that's easy. I just don't wanna have to take them off.
I hear you. I hear you.
You don't have to take them off. I don't think anybody's intending to take them off.
No.
Yeah, they're, they're.
I just wanted that to be clarified.
That's, that's good.
What else?
Okay.
That's fine.
Um, then Jonathan, I had, um, the lumens I talked with Jonathan, you know, where I started with that.
Well, I'm sad. No, the only, the only, well, two other things he had mentioned, um, his house has a sprinkler system. As it's written now, he's supposed to dig a well for that. He's hoping, he's hoping that can just be the new lot that he's well.
That's in the, that's in the special, that's in the, we're being the special permit right now, the design guidelines.
That's F five, I'm jumping, yeah. Appendix F point five, number eleven. His house has a sprinkler.
Unfortunately, that sprinkler system waters the, the other area, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut that off.
He knows, yeah.
And we're gonna cut that off from the other area. I don't use it much. I mean, I really try to.
Well, we usually put that, we put that condition in the life.
We do.
Yeah, and particularly, and we do it in the, in the site plan approval too, but we do it in the, particularly if there's common areas that will have to be watered.
Yeah.
All right. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to think about that one.
Well, no, it's, offer compromise on that, Al.
Yeah.
If they do it, you know, I know what you've done, shouldn't say what you've done. What's happened with some people, they go to put an addition on a house that then is subject to a house that wasn't
Yeah.
subject to site plan approval, then they're having to put it in a well, as far as I understand. How about if they do an addition to this house or have to go through?
Well, it's, it's an upgrade to the house. I agree, but it's kind of cheap upgrade to the house.
I'm, I'm.
And there are other, there are other ways I might expect.
I think that, that could be used to trigger it. If you go through an addition to the house.
Well, I, I would go further and stipulate that the existing system that's watering lot, uh,
Has to be disconnected.
has to be discontinued.
Yes.
Yeah.
You're saying if there's an addition?
No.
Just as.
No, it's a different.
Now, I want to be watered.
I don't wanna be watering his lot.
Oh, wow. It's, it's counterintuitive. The, the original lot is lot two. They could be watered, so it's like that. So, they're saying.
Well, it hasn't been. I don't water the entirety of lot one with this sprinkler system. I just got it so that it, you know, I was able to get grass.
Well, the, the decision definitely, I'd say, has to cut off lot one from this.
I think everybody agreed to that.
But you were planning to do that. Yeah.
Yeah, so then everybody agreed to that one.
Yeah.
Well, it.
Just a question about lot two.
Where are we? Do you think that?
It is.
Prescient?
It's tricky because.
It's, considering the existing sprinkler system would be grandfathered and that if there's a.
If there's a major addition.
If there's any change, uh, yes, then, then a well has to go in.
Yeah.
For lot two.
Like any change as far as exterior.
Well, which is.
Lot one.
Lot one is a well.
Any change to lot two triggers.
Right.
Now, we have to describe any change. That means.
Is it site plan approval or special?
Any change.
Any change. So, landscaping change, any exterior change.
Triggers.
You wanna be, okay.
Triggers a well.
Okay, well, okay.
Well, I love it. Okay. Any change.
Well, any change is pretty vague now.
Well, anyway, wait, wait, if we end up planting trees between two properties, you know, I don't wanna have to put in a sprinkler system and, and I want, I wanna be planting trees.
Well, we're, we're giving you a break already. I mean, I hope you realize that.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't wanna, I, I.
How about, how about any?
I, I do. I, I do. You know, I don't know what.
How many?
I'm getting, getting up to speak with that.
Yeah, how about any addition or subtraction from the house requiring site plan approval or will require?
Oh, let's, let's start.
No, no, he's gonna be watering the landscape, the additional landscaping with it.
It's, it's. It's not gonna be consequential. I mean, they're gonna get watered anyhow.
Maybe, maybe one way of saying is, yes, any changes to the building, but also any increase, no increases to the existing system are allowed.
Yeah, that's right.
So, if you could add more heads, you can't.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
That's not it.
Okay. Is that, is that the end of the breaks you want?
Uh, uh, no, there's, there's.
One more break.
There's one more.
Well, we got another historical.
No, we just have, we just have one more that.
How can we specify changes that would trigger that? By the way, was it requiring site plan approval?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or special permit?
Special permit for the historically important pieces.
Okay, so either site plan approval or special permit.
Yes. Or special permit. Okay.
Right. Any change requiring one of those two things.
Right, right. I mean, if the, if the wing gets taken off and on site plan review, then that triggers the.
And no additions to the irrigation.
Right.
No additions.
And shut off.
If it's one escape it only.
Complete shut off to lot one.
I mean, if they wanna add some more trees or whatever, I mean, why would they?
I don't, I don't want addition to the sprinklers.
Right. There should be no, there should be no addition of.
This was not against lot.
If they wanna take out some heads to the lawn and put them next to the trees, they still have what, however many heads, right?
Yeah, the same amount of heads. The same amount of water is being distributed.
You could readjust it.
No net.
That's what I meant.
We should, we want to build.
Yeah, no net increase.
I suppose.
This is, you understand, it's a standard requirement, like fairly to you as we do.
I know.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, 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 I'm not, I'm not being contentious about it. I just wanna make sure that we.
So, what's the other thing? The only one, only one he bought is, this is on the historical, all his shutters are plastic.
Sorry?
They're kind of, they're hard.
I'm sorry, you're plastic and I would.
Yeah, there's a.
This says existing synthetic shutters may be replaced with wood shutter.
Yeah. What's wrong with that?
What's wrong with that?
Well, if two of them break and some of them are breaking, and I, I can't find replacements.
Says may. It doesn't say have to.
Maybe.
We're asking you to be a nice guy and do it, but if not, it's a may.
Okay. Where does it say may?
He just read it.
Well, it says. Oh, maybe.
They're gonna take the may away now.
No, no, no. It says may. I assumed that, I assume it was a pat on the head.
You seen the number of shutters on the front of that house?
Yeah, there's. In fact, I have, I have pictures of it and.
Look, we would ordinarily require wood shutters irrespective of how many there are. So, this is.
Don't pick any uglier ones.
This is.
I would never do this. I mean, you know, I, I, you know, this is, you know, the other problem is, I've replaced, and, and this is what another issue I want to bring up, is I've replaced all the sockets and the fascias with hazing. All the, all the lattice in the back of the house, all this lattice in the.
You care? He doesn't care.
I don't wanna know.
I'm taking care.
They don't wanna know. Okay, but all, it's all plastic. So, but what I'm saying is, if, if, in two months, if someone comes down and says, you know, what are you doing?
No, it's already, it's already there.
It's already there. I mean, you know, or someone says, there's a lot of plastic, where this plastic come from, you know, or.
Well, you're, you're gonna, there's nothing in here that's.
Maybe, maybe.
To photograph, make a photograph record of the house.
Yeah, and, and listen.
I, I just.
You're giving us way too much information, okay?
Okay.
I would advise, I would advise your client not to give us that much information.
No more, no more true confession, Al.
Um, if, if this comes back and forth for a special permit modification, then we're gonna be talking about replacement that, that is consistent with the historical nature of the house.
And I'll be retired by then, so I don't care.
And he's gonna, he's gonna be gone by then, so he doesn't care.
No, he's there for a quite a while, as far as I understand. So, I think that, that just brings us up to the letter, right?
Hold on. This, this, this.
No.
Well, hold on.
This is exhibit B. No, that, that's raised in my mind.
Oh, okay.
I think this takes us to the letter.
What letter?
What letter?
Oh, the one that I sent to you, my thought we were going.
We're going.
That, that, my comments were attached to, to my.
Okay, we didn't see a letter. What is it? Devolved?
It's, I'll, I'll go right to where it is to see it. Late.
It's in this section here.
In the cartier.
She protected for that.
Oh, the fundamental thing that we hit on, if, if someone wants to raise the entire house, I don't think you folks ever publicly made a decision on that. We were proposing special permits for modifications to the house and any significant figures you have to modify. We were suggesting that if you took down the whole house, it would be site plan approval with.
No.
No?
Okay. Special permit.
I thought that's what you were gonna say.
Absolutely.
What, what's that? Say, say, I'm sorry.
Saying if, if you want, if, if your buyer someday down the road wants to take down the whole house, they would have to modify the special permit.
Absolutely.
And where is that said? I think it says that now.
Yeah.
Says it now, because, yeah, that would be an alteration to.
That's more than, more than an alteration.
Yeah.
Right.
It would trigger under, it would.
Correct.
Otherwise, what's the point?
Yeah.
I, I think you were, I think why.
But, but that's not what I was bringing up here. I mean, that was just saying that.
Same thing.
Same thing.
It basically covers it.
You can't change other issues. Well, that makes, they're saying you can't.
Can't knock it down.
You can't knock it down without mending the specialty.
Right.
Oh, and what, what do we?
Yeah, all, all the stuff we've done doesn't get us anything.
I'm pretty proud of you there.
That's, that's, that's the position. I mean, that's.
Yeah. So, I don't know. What we're, we're doing, the town's doing well, you're doing well. You know, I, I wanna make sure that I don't.
You're hearing they're not gonna yield any money. He doesn't, Rob didn't know that they're, what he was saying, what he was saying where it says it's not gonna be, it's gonna be saved. He said prefer.
If they were to demolish the house, yes.
And the special permit.
That's the man.
Well, I'm first, let me, let me.
Let me ask, how was it done on North ass?
How is doing it here?
We just take down the windows.
Yeah, limit to a special permit.
Okay, just like some of the.
You're not being treated differently.
You're asking for getting.
And more.
Oh, no, 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 no. They want it. And they want, and we'll shut.
They want to feel like they were drinking.
I, I have, look, we haven't had a lot of time to prepare, you know, and so, so.
That was misty world.
We're, we're, we're getting so naive and answer, I wasn't lying on that business. I was.
All right. So, okay, is that it? Is that the end of the list?
I want, actually, I have one thing if you don't mind, on, on, if we can.
Wait a minute.
Okay, you want to finish?
Let's, let's let them finish.
Oh, um, two things, and I, I hit on this when I, when I sent to you, my, on, on the historical, as it's written now, there's special permit guidelines on the north wing.
Yeah, I know. We, we're getting back to the notes.
Same, same, same like that, yeah. Same like that you go.
As I was explaining to the board before you guys came in, the, the chairman of the, the, the historical commission and, and the, and the member who put together the list of, of, of guidelines, uh, thought that it would, it was worth a discussion of, of saving those particular elements or at least having those subject to review. Uh, and I, they said, they asked me to keep that on the list. I, I questioned whether, you know, that, that was something that was essential because it's the north wing and we've said the north wing is not part of the key features of the house, but they thought those features were important enough to at least consider. As I was saying earlier, I, I, I don't wanna speak for people who aren't in the room, so, you know, I know that there was a feeling that those were, were elements that they thought were important, but I can't tell you personally why they thought they are important.
How about if any of those wanna change at site plan?
I, I don't want those in there.
No, but, yeah.
I mean, I, I, that should be site plan. I mean, that's.
North wing site plan approval, it's already in the.
In here, right.
The official guidelines.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so let's leave it that.
Right now, it's the way it's worded there, that's, it's a modification, a special permit, if he wants to change.
Right, and I, I don't like your, your change, Jonathan, where you, you noted that the north wing is subject to, to site plan approval. And that's it. And then where it says the side of north wing, the door and so forth, that gets, is subject to site plan approval, which really can't be denied. So, it's just, you know, it just becomes an exercise in reviewing whatever it is that wants to happen to the, to those elements. But I, if, if, if that's a deal breaker, keeping those in, I, I would not insist on keeping them, and I.
Okay, let's take them off. I'll take you, I'll take you on.
Take me up on that one.
The only other thing.
I, I, I just, I think it.
It doesn't relate to everything else. It's a, I mean, yeah, it's inconsistent, so I would take it out too.
Okay.
We're taking out four and five.
It, it becomes, it starts to get confusing. You know, when we, when we turn around to sell this house at some point, you know, I don't want the buyer to be confused or afraid because that has a whole nother set of issues, you know, not gonna take out with the board.
It's true. It's confusing.
But it's, yeah.
Yeah, you, you blend them on this thing.
You, you don't need to, to put a cherry on top of that one.
Well, thank you for putting your cherry on it.
I was a little bit too quick. I'm writing a lot of stuff for Board of Appeals this afternoon, so I wrote this, but I didn't include it. I don't see it anyway. I was trying to put some language in, pointing out that, trying to come up with some language saying that if he wants a site line easement here, he can do it, but that won't interfere, but it can't interfere with the requirement that at least five shade trees put there. I, I wrote something, but it didn't make it into what it's, it's such a, I don't know where it is. You know, so we have, the plan shows this sight line.
Call it a view corridor.
A view corridor. Just, you know, I can send something to EMI to see if that passes muster.
Okay, okay.
The only, the only other thing, Jonathan, is we gotta be careful, if that septic system ends up going in front of the house, you know, we don't wanna be planted, there's reason for that, the septic system.
You can't, you can't, right, yeah.
But you should have room for that.
There should be room for both.
Yeah, I think so, you know, there's room on the other side of the wall, um, and on the town, um, I'm not sure that they would want...
It's not your problem, you don't have the plan. Wherever it goes.
They may move nice over there.
You'd have to get them in now.
Yeah, if you wanna, if you wanna control it, how do you put them in now? You wanna control...
Well, they can't put them in right now.
Well, no.
Well, it's not bad.
This year.
So if he did that, you, you do the, you check the placement with Emi and the type of tree.
And there's some, there's some twenty foot trees there now.
Susan, wherever she is, would wanna be consulted, type of tree. Where are you?
She's in a rectangle.
She's away.
Remote.
She's on the phone.
So...
I'll have a good time.
Kim, but Kim would sign off on one.
Yeah.
Kim would sign, she would sign off on it.
Yeah, yeah, so, just so, so if you don't wanna wait for someone else to be...
Well, I would rather choose the trees myself, or...
So...
Probably better than...
So you should talk to Kim, see what she wants for trees.
The ones you want.
So, that would, that would be part of the, of the definitive subdivision, uh, decision, because this, this, okay, it's already in the definitive...
Well, it's, it's in there as, um, to go in under, at the time of site plan approval.
Yeah.
If we wanna change it to that, then we should, then we would have to change that condition, to say that as part of subdivision, it would have to.
But he can always do it early.
You, yeah, you can do it early, if you do it, then it's just when site plan approval comes up, it's done.
It's done, right.
You check the box, we don't have to...
Yeah.
So we shouldn't have to change facing, that he wants to do it early, he can.
Yeah, he can.
No, no, it's just that it's another piece of property. So, if you, if he put them in, he'd have to put them in before the property changed hands.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you do it that way? It's not, once it changes hands, now we'd be digging another piece of properties.
That's right.
That's right.
So then we don't have any trees.
Exactly.
I just planned...
Well, at that point, we have it under the site plan approval.
Excellent, they get fine that it does.
Forgot to tell you.
This is getting, for five trees, it's getting really complicated. If this happens, then then, I, I just say, put it in the, in the, um, put it in the subdivision decision.
And you have to plant it if you find...
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Just keep it simple, and, and, and for example, sounds good to me.
Okay.
Yeah, planting trees is always good, it's taking you down...
Yeah, it is, and, and I'm all for it. No problem.
That's right.
Are we reviewing language now?
Now.
Are we? Do you have language you want?
Okay, well, I have a comment.
All right. So, Steve, you have a comment on Exhibit B?
On Exhibit B, yes. Maybe it's a really stupid comment, but I would say anyway. So, um, with that, being able to see it, 'cause I'm not definitely able to, I understand the east facade of the main block is the main facade of the original house. The one we wanna preserve the models.
Yes, and so...
Okay, and it's out. So, oh, perfect, thank you.
Good.
Thank you for that question for that. Great. So, um, so, the Historical Commission thinks that the door and trim should be saved, and the windows and trim, immediate elemental window, fan light, and the existing synthetic...
Right.
Existence of that shudders, they would. Okay, so, for example, what if they wanna take down this little pediment over the door? They can do that?
I think Emi has to decide if that requires site plan approval.
And, and the other thing, I mean, this is, this is a ridiculous...
I see that as surrounding trim.
Because if it's not listed, it's not a special permit.
But it says in surrounding trim. Doors and surrounding trim.
Doors and surrounding trim, wouldn't that be part of the surrounding trim?
That's what I would call it.
I guess.
I mean, you can say all arrectoral, um, whatever you...
But, but more to my point, you know, what, what if someone wants to change, are these clavroths?
Your shingles.
Shingles, okay. So what if, once someone wants to change all the shingles to clavroths, that's okay?
Says wood shingles.
So wood clavroths, overall.
Or does it say...
Most of the wood...
Wood shingles.
Most of the wood shingles.
I have replaced on the house.
Oh, under this overall, okay, I missed it for a while.
Yeah, no, these are...
I, I just wanted to make sure the...
There's no cracks.
Were completely covered, 'cause I, I, I kind of had this vision of, of...
Giant flaying window going and so on.
Yeah, like of everything being gone, except for the door and trim, and the windows and the shutters.
And they're all subject to demolition delay, but aren't they, Emi, if it's not listed here, he has, doesn't, Al, doesn't he have to decide that that requires site plan approval for changes that aren't listed here?
Yeah, because the house still doesn't require it.
Well, if you say, if you say the south facade in its entirety, including...
We're talking about the siding, we're talking about the chimneys, talking about the, the roof bitch in, in the Easts, talking about the, the doors and surrounding trim, windows and...
Okay, so maybe, maybe we're okay.
What's left?
But that should say chimneys, not chimneys.
I don't know why, I don't know why we no longer had anything on the screen.
That, that should say...
I was gonna find the plans, so I forgot.
That should say chimneys, there are two chimneys.
You gotta leave a front one.
Okay.
You hear?
Multiple chimneys.
Chimneys.
Chimney in the south facade.
Okay.
So, now, if you say south facade in its entirety, including, I mean, that's what you deal with.
Well, we're, we're talking, I don't know if you're talking about, I thought we were talking about the east facade, but whatever. I, I think that this overall probably covers...
Covers enough then.
I just wanted to be sure.
Got it. No, I understand. We don't wanna have any holes in the...
Right.
Yeah, but I, I, I think it's, you know, the language that, that Leslie just suggested, you know, says, the intent is to preserve the, the south side and the east side in their entirety. Maybe that's, that becomes paragraph A, one A.
Then see, yeah, that's what's the same specifications all the time.
Okay. So, I don't know, we, now we've lost it.
Here, I'll put it back up.
So paragraph A, insert a new paragraph A, you know, we're gonna add Jonathan's modifications up here in the initial paragraph, and then I think we, we insert a new paragraph A to say the intent is to preserve the south and east facade in their entirety.
I know.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. We're thinking about the door.
So, which one do you wanna review first?
So you, are you gonna pick up all these changes on the guidelines?
Yeah, yeah, I got them, I got them, go with you.
Good.
When you sit out, do you send them red highlight, Emi?
Um, no, I can, though. Usually I just do the changes and, and after they're approved, I send them, you know, for a review and signature. Yeah.
So we look at the, the trailer first.
Okay.
And you're gonna pick up this, all of the sprinkler?
Yes, I got, I, I wrote, I got that condition.
Okay.
No expansion of the sprinkler system, any change requiring site plan approval, special permit on lot two.
And cut off the sprinkler system to...
And cut off the coastal fifth, which doesn't allow one.
To one one. It's an expensive hat. These are educated. You really do have one, it's long.
Yeah.
That's why you can do meeting after meeting.
You got all my money. Youngest one. You have, do you want to hear his money?
I do. Rob is in graduate school.
There's education, education.
Education, it's supposed to be good.
Try to... I thought you just had Steve do it. He's so...
No, he doesn't pick up everything.
That's right.
I'm sure I've got a couple that he, he don't have.
Hey, Emi?
Yes?
Did you, um, dump that little edit that I talked about earlier?
I have your, I have your edit, um, it hasn't been run by everybody here, but I agree with it.
So might be another way, better way?
Yeah, but I see your point, to encourage preservation, and then it needs to...
I have a checkbook.
Yeah, that's...
Well, no, they went to... Snelling. Snelling, yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you.
I said, yes, that's, that's how I noted, I started with a semicolon, but I, I do have your edit, your suggested edit to, to A. I agree.
Okay, that's all, that's...
Where does the, um, the two lot restriction, the two house restriction fit into this?
It fits into the narrative, but we can't condition it, because it has to be voluntary.
But it's already executed.
Is it executed? No.
So we don't see that.
No.
When will it be executed?
Yeah.
We talked to Tom Council. That's Katie Lottman.
Lottman.
Lottman, yeah. Just drag it out a little bit, I'll find out. Frankly, I'm sorry, I forgot about it.
Okay. I think we need to make that a condition of approval for these.
No, why don't we just, don't put it in decision, we'll get it to you before you release it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you got two weeks, basically.
I am schooling right now, yes.
So if it's approved today, that's two weeks to file for a special permit.
We approve it, can we say with the assumption that that happens?
No.
We can't.
Just a full dog, we get it.
No, if, if we tie it to a condition in here, then it's tied to zoning, and it could, then it could be...
No, but you, you're gonna have to bird dog that.
Yeah.
That's, that's absolutely key to this whole thing.
I mean, how do we make sure that happens? Heck, only if, if decisions made tonight, you cannot do it.
So, till I file it.
Well, why don't, just let me propose, why don't we wait to decide?
Yeah.
You don't, you don't...
We'll wait until those go through this.
I'm more comfortable with that.
Yeah.
If you're comfortable.
No, they, they wanna see that it's been signed.
Right.
Vote on it next time.
Okay.
You'll, you'll make the revision, so...
Can't, can't they vote on it?
No.
That's why we had another...
You wanna vote on it?
You can vote more.
We don't have to conduct that.
Exactly.
So we know where we're going.
Well, we'll have read everything.
So everything will be done, except for me.
Except for the vote.
My wife has to sign, I can't use the property, so...
Sorry.
Okay.
Everything but the vote.
Yeah, okay. So we, we know that we're good, but then we just need that...
Yes. Oh, that's good news.
Yeah.
That's good snow, I know, okay.
Yeah.
It's off of Love Lane.
It's off of Love Lane, that's, and I'm trying to do, situated south, I believe.
I mean, it would be nice to have everything done tonight. But, no, the other way around now.
Yeah.
Right.
It's, that's something that fell into cracks.
I did. Well, that's a good thing. Yeah. I did.
We're just doing the...
Put that in there right now.
Yeah.
I can bring it home now.
I assume someone's already reviewed.
Wasn't having...
Someone has already...
Do you have questions? But it's a reading, you guys.
Right, so we don't need to review the...
But we actually approve these minutes?
Yes.
Okay, yes, those minutes, I only put the approved minutes, the other ones we don't...
So we don't need to approve them, but...
You, you, you can't, you can't.
Yeah, right, so...
So you can't change them now.
Yeah, I would have, but I didn't know it had to be something.
Anybody have any changes?
Have questions, yeah, but it's reading, sorry, I have a little more to go.
Page two of nine, twelve nineteen twenty eighteen.
Oh, okay.
And definitive is spelled definitive. On the first page.
Definitive.
Definitive. Ah.
See, Steve doesn't pick them all up.
That's right.
And then, where was it, was the date?
Oh, June... Twenty nineteen.
Were on twenty nineteen?
Twelve nineteen, twenty nineteen. Under application date, public hearing dates.
Application date, okay.
Public hearing dates.
Okay, eighteen.
Are you, are you on the definitive? Or are you, have you moved on?
I don't know, I'm on whatever this is, am I in the wrong place?
You're the, you may be the wrong place.
Darn it. I'm wondering why it took me so long, you guys took quicker. Which, so where are we?
What's the definitive at?
Hold on. They don't give us any light anymore. This one.
So, uh-oh.
Oh, it's pretty much the same. No, it's pretty much the same stuff in the other one, though, right? Yeah.
It mostly, it talks about waivers more, but one is waivers for what you would do for density.
A lot of the same, just for the year, right?
The other is waivers for the application...
This is, this is the subdivision.
It has to be built in labs, and this is the first step. It said that, it has to be built.
I'm pretty sure that is. Most of it is. Clarice Drive? Where's that Clarice Drive?
I believe it's just to the south.
Is it there somewhere? Okay, I just haven't seen it come up in any of the plans.
It's, it's...
It's just down the road.
Yeah, it's off, it's off their plan scope, so it's just basic.
What you're showing, this is core work.
Yeah.
It says intersection geometry distances to this wood one. I'm just wondering why we've seen it in there, okay?
Um, it's a requirement, it's the intersection. Yeah.
It's the intersection.
Yeah.
Pretty much, okay, all good. All good, all good. Into the notes, we can't talk about it, okay, good, that's easy.
Right, no waiver something.
Where did we specify the irrigation?
Um...
We already talked about that?
It's gonna go into flexible subdivision under a special condition.
Okay.
Are we talking about that, this one now, or no?
Um, there is a waiver on this.
On, yeah, so you do have to vote on a waiver, the dead end waiver on the definitive, because it was proposed with the dead end.
I know, but where does it show up in the decision?
First page here.
First page.
First page, yeah.
First page.
Three, three F. Are you looking on the definitive still?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
First page, Council.
Waiver, that's the...
First page.
Waiver, where we reach within the subdivision shall be. Need some light back.
Yeah, what is going on?
First hole. I think they should turn it down to that.
No, but it's up here.
He's turned it down. That's a.
Correctional, why we're granting the waiver.
That's bad.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Somewhere.
So. It's a three oh three F.
Mm-hmm.
The length of the proposed dead end with an additional house is not expected to have a detriment to safety or access. Okay?
So there's a paper or something Mary asked to sign, right?
Yeah.
And then just get that deemed.
The deed restriction.
Just get a deemed.
Yeah.
Sign it.
Right.
Well, it's gonna be filed, right?
Yeah, it's gonna be filed.
It's gonna be filed, so you basically, it's gonna be, you've got.
Jonathan's gonna file.
Jonathan, yeah, knows how to do it, you're gonna sign it with a notary and you record it at the.
All right. Everybody done with the definitive? Have we beaten that one today?
Let me, let me just ask a question, I suppose I should ask this to Jonathan, but wouldn't that have to be recorded after their two lots?
No.
No, this is an attempt, expresses an attempt. Not to subdivide the property.
I just, I don't know if it's legal, yeah.
All right, so, did you have changes, Doc? Do you have changes?
I'm sure.
Okay. So, motion to approve the definitive subdivision?
I move that we approve the definitive subdivision plan approval for ninety eight Love Lane. There were not any changes.
Here. Several.
We're a couple.
Yeah.
As, with the changes, but.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I, I, no opposed, moving on down to this, and you can take that off, because you made your ready.
Yeah, exactly.
You left it.
I know, I wondered why you'd go this way.
We were waiting up for you.
So I knew it'd be my fault.
Okay, so we're moving on to the special permit, flexible subdivisions. You're gonna add the condition of planting the trees, right?
Yes. Tree planting condition, that is noted here.
Okay.
Prior, I'm gonna say prior to lot release. And we're gonna trigger it.
Okay.
The irrigation?
Irrigation is gonna be an additional special condition.
Okay, so, just, when that by the, you know, when you've done the final draft?
Okay.
Okay.
Make a look at those and sign off on them.
We'll do it.
Should we include that in documents related to this decision?
Include which?
The preservation restriction.
I, the preser, the, you mean the.
It's historical.
No.
No, not exhibit B, right, you're talking about.
No, I'm talking about the, the, the restriction that includes two lots.
Yes. Yes, we should, it's gonna be an owner provided one, so it's just like they gave us plans, so yes, we should.
Right, that's how, that's how it drives in, otherwise it's gonna be up there floating in space.
Okay.
We don't. There it is. Ooh, Reggio.
Eric, come again? So I, I put him in as the author because.
The site got one's author?
Yeah, because afterwards he's the one, he took it even though we all.
Okay.
Did it. I mean, we can.
Okay.
Change that, but I.
Okay.
Can I go, I'm gonna repeat a tip horse for a sec here. Um, talking about raising the house in its entirety. What happens if they take down a significant portion of the existing house? Does that still trigger?
Yes, it said.
So anything, so anything that affects the main block?
Yes.
Okay. It says that in here.
South and east. And it says that in the guidelines.
Okay, all right, and the guidelines, and should we be putting that under special conditions?
It is under the special condition too.
Where is that?
The first special condition says it. First special condition refers to those guidelines.
Uh, C, you have one?
Uh, appendix G.
G?
Yeah.
Appendix.
But that's not what we said, we said only, they can take, we said they can take down the north wing. It says all, anything they do.
Described in exhibit B.
Okay.
We're taking, we're taking the north wing out of exhibit.
Right, right, I see, okay.
Uh, lot two, lot two.
Yeah, it's.
Where's your viewscape line, Mr. Jonathan? Do you have that?
No, no, I was gonna have submitted, I'll send it to you.
Doesn't the plan say view corridor?
Yeah.
Call it, you wanna call it a view corridor.
Well, it's, I think it's called a view plane.
It's called view plane, view easement.
View corridor is giving more.
Right, but.
I think that's important to you as well.
You had talked about it a lot.
No, I know, I know, but we just wanna add that in the special conditions.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not adding, my point is, I'm not adamant about that, but that's something that we've sort of all kind of like.
We all like.
Okay, good.
Hey, Emma?
Yes.
Okay, on page seven, twenty three, under, there's a very nice one. Layout of the subdivision is keeps noran character is, I mean, we say is.
Yeah, the layout of the. And keeps.
Yeah, she's weird, Mike.
Okay.
Keeps, this thing out is, it keeps north.
Done with that.
Um, page seven, bottom.
Bottom, G two.
Yeah.
First line.
Yeah.
It's more.
It's more characters, keep up, keep similarly.
Yeah.
Get the same.
Doing the revisions already?
You get the same issue, Eli, on page two, with the twenty nineteen.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I copied over.
Yeah.
On page six?
Page six.
At the very top, it would say two proposed lots, because you just keep things going, so you say two proposed lots are created.
Yeah.
Sorry, wait a sec.
At the very top, one point zero one.
Yeah.
Just to specify how many, so it's.
Okay.
Proposed lots, just to keep things clear. And then, I don't know, just again, maybe to reiterate, but on shade trees can we say, um, five canopy trees? Or maybe that just reverts back, we don't wanna get into it.
No, no.
New shade and five canopy trees.
No, that's actually, what it says.
Well, G two does say five canopy trees.
Yeah.
So there's no reason not to say that.
All right.
Okay.
Where is that?
So, here, here it's.
Here is shade trees.
Yeah. Say the number of canopy trees.
That needs to be modified, because we're putting it in as the, into one of the.
Yeah, it's gonna be a condition now.
So it's gonna be a condition.
Yeah.
But in a.
Under drainage, it says planning board has reviewed proposed plans, that's for both lots, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, on seven, um, under C.
Mm-hmm.
Um, talks about design guidelines require review of demolition of stone walls and demolition of stone wall, blah, blah, blah. I don't know why we'll see anything about the review of demolition of stone walls, because we're not allowing it and they're not asking for it.
The demolition of the stone walls, when they do a curb cut into.
Right, but that's, that refers only to the demolition of the stone wall fronting Love Lane.
Yes.
So you could say design guidelines, um, require a review for the demolition of the stone wall fronting Love Lane. It sounds like there are more walls coming down.
There could be, that was discussed.
Well, I think you're making a general statement and then a specific statement.
Yeah.
And the general statement, I don't know of any other stone walls that are coming down.
Not in this proposal, but when it was discussed.
Okay.
Um.
Well, then maybe it should be period, design guidelines. Require review of demolition of any stone walls, period. And the demolition, the stone wall fronting will be limited to a single curb, curb cut.
Okay. For me.
Um.
But did you talk about that, uh?
Does it begin with that one?
Yeah, Kate. Under F.
Yeah. Right, the thing is, just wanted to say, we're only letting them make, take down part of one wall, that's all I'm trying to get to. And then under DI, again, five canopy trees will be required. We're gonna do that, Kate. Um. And then on eight of twenty three. It says the wood buffer to the trail adjacent to it is being preserved. How is that being preserved?
It's, um, the limit of work line is there.
Okay, by current, can we say by, in current plans or limit of work? I, I wasn't sure whether or not there was COMCOM and something to do with it. If there was some talk for a while.
Okay. We can say COMCOM has reviewed it and it's satisfied that, that the limit of work will preserve the buffer.
Right, tie together. So we know where that is. That be it.
Okay. Um, while we're there. On page eight. The top item, it's out of the COMCOM thing too. That's missing G point one.
It is missing G point one.
On the last column. And the next item, it's not necessary, but since your first sentence, you say that conventional would require demolition of existing house. Stone wall. In the second sentence, I think you should probably say the proposed development requires no new roadways for area sections and allows existing house to remain.
Okay.
And then on page seven. In the first and second parts of item A, I think, to be consistent, they should both say view corridor.
Okay.
Instead of view plane and view easement. Also in the third item. It turns the end of the last sentence, it also says view plane, one word actually changed to view corridor.
Okay.
And also in that third section under A, um, second sentence, should say open space, had to be one of the lot.
Okay.
Um, and then item, earlier we talked about, item C. And. I think that's it. Yep, that's it.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Oh, one of the, on seven twenty three, under G seventy one, I think is our item.
Okay.
Okay, are we done?
C.
Everybody? Make a motion?
Don't make a motion.
Don't?
Don't, that's right.
We're, we're waiting till we get.
Yeah, that's right.
Excuse me, yep. Thank you. No problem.
We're not going.
Just for the.
You're right.
We've done all the.
So.
When's the next one?
Twenty third, sorry.
Twenty third. We'll review the decision on, flexible decision on the twenty third.
It is what it is.
It'll be two minutes.
Yeah. I, I found my language on that, view easement or corridor.
So it's sent to me?
I'll clean it up, you give it the name you wanna call it.
Okay.
Right. But it's easy to locate, because we'll just say the area between Love Lane and the sightline, so it's this area right there. And it'll say that this, this, his ability to put that will not supersede the requirements in paragraph two above, because we'll put it under special condition. That five, at least five canopy trees be planted.
Got it.
Okay, taking that noise.
Okay. Good.
We're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Early night, pretty good.
We're doing a little bit of dental for the rest.
Wait a minute, we're not done with our.
Did we have getting ready?
Did we, maybe like have a?
We're doing exhibit A last time.
We still have, a number of items left on the agenda.
We're done with you, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, good night.
Good night. Thanks, Dave.
Done with any real public.
Take a while to get to the right place. But thank you.
Thank you.
Honor.
Is that gonna be your broker? The guy who was at the last meeting?
Oh, maybe, he's bad as interested.
Yeah.
He's interested in, in lawyers? Yeah, he's, um, he builds a pretty house, and that's what, I've known him for a long time.
Okay.
But that's, it's the style house that I like, more, more so than anything.
Okay.
I've done a lot of work with him over the years, but, you know. He's built some houses in West, he's done a nice job. But that's the style house.
What's his name?
Daryl Nash. Cause he built some pretty houses.
Yeah.
One, one hundred blackout, he just built, and one upon Beeter, he built. That one involved, the one that's up on the corner of Beeter and Randcliffe. But he's built a lot of homes in Sudbury and New Island, and some off of like, that are, that are identical to the one that was just.
I you just have to find out if he's a tire kicker or not.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. But he knows, he knows process, so. He, he knows, yeah.
Has he been at the board before?
No.
No.
No, no.
But he was here for that last meeting, so.
Yeah, I know, he, he's, he's familiar with the documents.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's not.
And they're within the, in the guidelines.
Right, right. Oh, you know, there was one other thing, and, and, I'm sorry, I, I took, I forgot, I'm just. Um, it had to do with the height. I, I didn't understand that, Jonathan, I was gonna ask you, Emo, the height of the new building in comparison to my house.
Yep. Has to just be lower from an absolute data point, the same survey point that's on, that has been used for your survey plans. And around that.
Somewhere.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. It's in the guidelines.
Yeah, so what is that, if, if I'm twenty feet higher when we're here on the Y?
So it's basically like if you were surveying it.
Right.
So if I, you know, if I survey it, and I, you know, I use whatever benchmark they use to, to do your survey to call the height. You know, they usually measure it, it's, it's given in an absolute, above median level, whatever that is, two hundred. Your house, your ridge is two hundred, the other one has to be lower than two hundred.
Pretty darn easy with your house.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure, yeah, that, I think that's what Daryl, Daryl talked about that.
Yeah.
And he was okay with that.
We worked with the whole data point.
And he was, okay, yeah, I don't, that's.
And then I ran it by John, I was just, just.
I just wanna make sure that.
Make sure my language is good.
I'm not gonna have a house like this.
No.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Good, okay, great.
Wait, and we actually got into this a little bit with the old library and the tavern. That the, that the, the old library was surveyed using a different base from the tavern. And so there was about an eighteen inch misalignment in the contouring. So we had to adjust to make sure that the two actually agree with each other.
And this is sort of the language.
That's what he's talking about.
Okay, great. Great, Terp, thanks so much.
Right.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.
See you at road permanent.
Eight days late, remember, and the fall, he said your goal was January first. Pretty good, a lot.
Right, all, all the stuff.
We're done, well.
Good night, where'd we get them? Protection language. Kim.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Protection language, like, whoa.
We should have that in the most of our stuff.
We should, actually, that's, that's what I wanted to bring up, Kim does recommend this to go in all of them. We should, actually, that's, that's what I wanted to bring up, Kim does recommend this to go in all of them?
Yes.
Bingo, that's a part of the standard.
I like it.
That's a part of the standard now, right?
It's great. Outstanding.
It's, it's interesting though, to try to figure out exactly like how their barriers helping provide the minimum of six foot high chain link fence thing along the inner seventy-five percent of the critical root zone of the tree. I have a lot of trouble envisioning that if I walked out by the tree.
Somewhere in here needs to talk about how the critical root zone is determined. I don't see that.
Okay, it is?
I don't see it, but I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, root protection, yeah, it's just, um, yeah.
The critical root zone, it's capitalized.
Right, so we have to define it.
There's standards, there's standards where you won't find the diameter.
Is this a term of art, critical root zone?
Yes.
It is a term of art, yeah.
It is. I think it's typically one point five times the diameter.
Yeah, one point five feet times the diameter.
From inches to feet. From inches to feet.
Yeah.
So somewhere then has to be put what that definition is, and then that should be under, when it says preconstruction data photog- photographs, they should also say what the width of the tree is, so you can go through the map.
Okay, I got the.
So define C or is there?
Critical root zone definition? And then, sorry, what was the photograph thing, Leslie?
I'm just saying that when they have the data photographs as part of what's going on, they should also at that point establish how wide the tree is the diameter, so you can do the, the critical root zone map.
They can do the formula to figure out exactly how far away.
So it's a twelve inch pine or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
It does vary per tree, tire.
Yeah, I bet it does.
Showed us like a little thing you can carry around if you just, you know.
Critical root zone calculator?
Yeah, I like it, I like it.
Yeah.
Be a tree nerd.
Yeah, I guess, but it's just like, so it looks complicated, it would make it hard, well, I think it would make it hard for you, I think what was it, it was really exactly the way it should have been. You know, cause this is supposed to be inspected by you, we like.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have a.
Well, usually they have the diameters on the plan.
Right.
Right, but yeah, you do always carry, you know, like, um, a measuring.
I will now. I have a big old measuring tape in my office that I'll have to carry around more.
Cause we'll be doing that, I mean, this is, uh, this is a fabulous thing, thank God, I love it, but definitely a little learning coming from it.
When they're putting up a six foot high chain link fence, I don't want them digging holes that are gonna hurt the tree.
They usually don't, I mean, it's usually got those feet with a weight.
Well, that's why, but I'm thinking, this one's on a real slope, so I don't know how that's really gonna work, I guess. And that, you know.
Sandbags and stuff like this, I don't know.
I, I, there might be, there might be a non, does not compute here, and I'm not sure what the answer is.
But it's done all the time, so I'm gonna have a solution, right?
No, no. So I don't know if Kim has a, has a comment for that.
That's a good question. We need a specification on the fence for protecting the tree.
Right.
And then a specification on that.
I don't want, I don't want them digging holes and putting in concrete. I don't see what I know what a wobbly, so I don't know what the answer is.
Sure, it's been done before. That's really good, I feel good about that, nice job, Kim and even. So on item dot dot, I, 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 under one on page two oh two, the root prune.
Root?
Yep. So it says blah, 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 via air spade, the limit, oh wait, sorry. Certified arborist shall root prune via air spray in the limit of work, is it? Within the limit of work, outside the limit of work, on the limit of work.
I think it's the limit of work line.
Yeah.
What? The actual line of the limit of work itself?
Yeah, so if they have to go in and excavate in there, the arborist, the certified arborist with the root, with, with the air spade goes and takes, does that excavation in that area. Whatever work is required in there.
Do you know where roots mean, correct, everybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
You know that they usually do it well in advance because by anticipating the roots at the very end, they encourage new root within the, the line of the zone. So it's a way that that tree is able to much better withstand transplanting or many things, and they often prune these tiny trees in their street before they fall and fall out.
So if, does this say that you should root, in order to root prune the tree, you're doing it right where the fence go, right at that line?
It looks like it's been supplied within the critical root zone, they are trying to root prune via air spade, so.
The limit of work.
Is it important required in order to minimize? All right, so I guess that, yeah, so they're just, they're trying to anticipate the future.
Okay, I see, I see where you're getting at, I.
Well, the.
I know what the intent is, so.
Okay, well, then maybe you can.
Yeah.
Who's paying the certified arborist?
Applicant.
Yeah, applicant.
Okay. So somewhere here, all the work of, pardon?
In this case, that's the rail trail.
Yes.
Okay.
So all you good taxpayers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So basically, and all air spade work is to be done by a certified arborist, I'm assuming?
Mm-hmm.
Not sure if it says that is.
Or, I mean, I would say.
It says in our certified.
Under their supervision also.
I want somebody there, I don't want somebody to just go to Home Depot and air spade, say, okay, okay.
No, it says that.
It says, yes.
It says.
All right. The work. I'm sorry?
I'm just gonna be the new air spading person in town.
There you go, hey, it works for me.
Air spade is a brand?
No, it's, it's a, it's a tool.
Okay. You have it capitalized.
It is what it says it is.
Okay. Kim, Kim, under B I or B one, whatever that is, it says, uh, shall inspect every nine months, can we say or at the beginning, or start and close of a project if it doesn't last nine months?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Stevens on page one.
Also with the.
Are you done?
No, also with the photographs, I'm sorry, with the photographs, I'm just going in the boilerplate, can we ask them to give some kind of scale to the photographs? Whether it's a person standing holding a six foot something, or.
Mm-hmm.
Just some kind of something for scale.
Okay. Okay, Steve.
Okay, well, at the end of page two, item two, prior to beginning the planning board.
Oh, yes.
Or board at the board, yes.
Page one, um, towards the end of the first paragraph, there should, should be the word and after two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
And to review the application on December nineteenth. Um, and the first line of the second paragraph, delete the first new.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Then, is there a quick reminder, I'll just give it to you.
Okay. The only comment I had on page one was, at the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
We're signing off on alteration of the stone wall and tree removal.
Oh, yeah, that should. That was boilerplate language, I think.
Or is it just tree removal?
With a tree removal, no stone wall.
Right.
At the bottom, last, last line.
The parenthetic in, paragraph three has an extra comma, extra tree.
Okay.
That was one of them, right?
That is the opposite of what the Oxford comma does to the Harvard comma.
There's this Oxford.
Yeah. We Oxford one would be at and, right? Or two.
We need to vote on.
Yeah, let's go.
I move that we approve the scenic road permit, um, for the, um, Concord Road, for the Mass Central Rail Trail, um, on Concord Road. Let's start over. I move that we approve the scenic road permit for the Concord Road at the intersection with Mass Central Rail Trail, scenic road permit, uh, with the changes noted.
A second. Call it a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous, moving on to forty-nine Hubbard.
Getting shorter.
Yep.
Oh, sweet.
Over, thank you.
Wait, hold on. I think this one, the wrong one, this is the administrative approval.
Yeah, this one, I, I was wondering about that.
Yeah, I just looked at it. This is the real one here.
Oh.
Sorry about that, I didn't check the.
Yeah, okay, what's the difference? Well, one of the differences is that this, this one actually specifies what trees get planted.
I was wondering what about that.
Yeah.
One is approval, the other is replacement.
Yeah, that one was the one for the two trees that we just, that were administratively approved, the ones that were dead and falling. This is for the whole thing.
Is this one a say? But it, it looks like it's just on a letter? No, okay.
I don't think she can see this one.
Yeah.
No, I don't think it's up on the electronic.
If you.
It says the arborist letter, the line, the COA amendment letter, and that's it, so, yeah, okay, fine.
COA amendment letter, is that one? That should be this.
Really, uh, I mean, it's, it's out, it doesn't look like it needs to be voted on, it doesn't say voted on this day and such and such, it's just a, is that it?
What's the date at the top of it?
January ninth, Tuesday, it's under the town Weston, Lexington.
Yes, that's the one, you have the correct one.
Oh, I see, definitely.
But it doesn't state that you were here, the number of trees, it just refers to the landscape plan.
So.
Well, it says three white lines.
Remove five white lines?
Removing, yes, but replacing, but.
Replacing is, yeah, according to the landscape plan.
Okay.
Right.
I just scroll up.
And when you look at the plans, you can see that, uh, there's significantly opposite.
We don't have the plans here. I remember looking at it at the time, but.
Yeah, I can show you.
You know, can you, is it a click or is it, yeah, might as well.
It's not a big deal.
No, I don't recall it being.
It's pretty minor.
Yeah, mostly the plan shows that five is not good, and then the new plan shows.
Sure, all right.
Yeah, can we take a quick?
I remember the photos of the dead trees on the driveway, the vines.
Yeah.
All right, and remember, she's not gonna take them all down there.
Oh, sure, that's correct.
Yeah, so this is really just approval for the other three to come down, and so did they all.
All righty. Do you wanna make a motion?
I move that we approve forty-nine Hubbard Road site plan, if you approve amendment to remove two, actually, it's more than two trees, it's, uh, five trees, let's say, five trees.
Right. Or else go on.
Yeah, um, as noted in the memorandum dated December thirteenth, twenty eighteen.
January ninth.
Oh, well, I'm the old one, yeah, twenty ninety, exactly, thank you, January nine, twenty nineteen.
A second. Call it a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous, Lee. Okay. Respond, change, fences, et cetera, fences, et cetera, field.
Is this a wall or a fence?
Why else?
Is it not steel, steel slats?
Is it thirty feet high?
Mexico penny quarter?
Yeah, it's Mexican. It's paying for it, then.
Yeah.
Can you do it once?
There you go.
Oh, did?
No, let me get this, we're, we're looking at this letter, correct, another on this letter, it's dated, uh, January ninth, correct?
Correct. Did we, did we get the, um, extra information we asked for? Like, we wanted to get some sort of idea of what the gate would be?
For the fact that that was.
The chain link fence.
No, we didn't, because what, as I understood, at least in the meeting, is if that comes in, he has to submit a, a cut sheet for it, and have that as a condition here.
All right. All right, fair enough.
I thought that the one along.
Yeah.
South Ave was also a stockade fence.
The one along South Ave is a stockade fence, so which one are we looking at here?
Well, that's, it says a black chain link fence with no rail top to be between South Ave.
And the house.
But, but you're talking, that should be between the house and the northern property line.
You mind bringing a picture out?
Sure.
I thought they were negating the trees in favor of the fence.
It was in either or.
It was, it was either or or both.
Right, but that's, that's the first bullet, the northwest side.
Oh, no, I meant.
That one's correct. It's, it's the second one.
Stockade fence or trees along the north side, that's in the neighborhood.
Where are the bullets, you mind?
So that, that dark dotted line is a stockade fence.
This is a stockade.
Isn't the one along south also a stockade fence?
It is a stockade fence along south.
But that's not what this says.
So we're.
It doesn't say, you need either a fourth bullet or, I think you need a fourth bullet.
Okay.
The black chain link fence should be between the house and along the, and the northern property line, or along the northern property line. But not between South Avenue and the house.
Right.
Which means, there's actually, but there's one here, between South Avenue and the house here.
Chain link?
Yeah, this one was a.
Just a short bit.
Right, it's, it's.
There's only one place that has any stockade, possible stockade fence.
No, it's also along Route thirty.
No, there are two places.
I thought she.
So along Route thirty, we approved already, it's.
Oh, that's a separate thing?
Right, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I thought she approved and Greg wanted the stockade fence that the, between trailside and them, they did not want to do the tree planting.
It was both, he wanted to do, wanted us to approve one or the other or both.
Right.
I don't, did we ever?
Yes.
Yes, that was a long.
We did.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, we did. I know, I thought we ended up with this.
You're fitting it, Scott.
Yes, I know it, okay.
It was either the trees or the fence or both.
All right. I bow to those who, uh, who, the memories were functioning.
So did Steve, did Steve change something?
No.
Yeah.
No, I, I do realize that was in another amendment.
Okay, so there's the or. His dogs, the dogs made it into there.
Wolf.
And I just make one change in the paragraph, starting about the, sort of the second unbullet, the, the first paragraph after the bullets.
Okay, yeah.
I would say the applicant presented a proposal to, to either extend, one, extend the pre-existing wood fence from South Avenue to encompass the voters' property, or to plant at least three trees, construct a labor's view of the property, or both.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do we need a size on those trees?
Well, he was gonna plant, relocate existing ones, so the size is kind of.
Okay, can we, then maybe we wanna say, relocate existing or recreate from the.
Exactly.
Whatever intersection corner of the property.
Good answer.
When you say extend the pre-existing wood fence, to me, that sounds like you're just.
On that same line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Instead of turning ninety degrees.
Okay. Oh, we can, we can say constructs.
Extension.
Ninety degree extension.
At the further, what property law? Right?
Mm-hmm. Well, it's, um.
It's in the, yeah, it's a whole property.
So we want this landscape plan that's online, landscape and exterior lighting plan. Yeah, correct.
The landscape and exterior lighting plan you're looking at, let me see about that one.
I mean, that shows fence delineations of the black chain link.
Yeah.
And this is, is that the, we've got it back there, along between me and butter, it's real side. I'm having trouble, it, it crashes my, when I, or, just all gets fuzzy when I try to enlarge it. And it also looks like it's putting significantly more trees than just. And it also looks like he's putting significantly more trees than just the tree, I mean, it's hard to tell what he's put in already and what is proposed. Does it mean that that is only.
We're not, we're not, what can edit, Sue? I'm gonna bring it up right now.
I mean, it looks like it's basically an increased lighting plan. But I can enlarge.
At least twice.
Need more coffee.
Red circles? So this is, this is the landscape and lighting plan. Are you looking at the one that was approved?
Um, I'm looking, well, it, it just, I have to wait for it to come into the, to the, to the, so I'm actually pretty good at this.
Well, this is the plan pre-fence, isn't it?
Yeah. Sorry, what was that?
Updated now?
What was that?
I don't think so.
This is the plan pre-fence.
This is the plan pre-fence, so you're looking at the one with the fence, right?
Okay, so we have one, who's moving now showing us the fence, the proposed fence?
Yeah.
Which is tight.
That's this one that we were just looking at.
But it doesn't show landscaping.
Yeah, it doesn't show landscaping.
That's okay, C O A amendment, C O, that's okay, additional fence photo. Yeah, that's two thousand seventeen landscape, so there's no current landscape plan for it.
We, we probably ought to show some.
Are we gonna leave as, as, or as planned at the end?
What trees go where? Should we, you know, should we require a plan that confirms?
This one's.
You mean the replacement tree?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what Leslie was saying.
Yeah.
This one here.
Requires, you get to see how that's done.
Oh, okay, is that one listed here?
No.
We should list it.
Okay.
Otherwise, who knows what, what's gonna happen.
What tree? Maybe one Christmas tree.
Alright, so it says prior installation specification, so we haven't seen it yet. Got it, thank you.
Why is the computer flickering the screen so much?
I don't know. Actually, that is this one, sorry, no, it is this one.
And then.
Oh, it is that one?
By applicant and then.
But that's just dated December fifteen, two thousand.
Twelve eleven eighteen, yeah.
Yeah.
Just have to put in that.
Oh, you're just changing the date?
No, I just am adding in this date right here that he did. This is, this is the date that John Hammel did this. This is the date for, that Greg marked it up.
So he's marked up the twelve fifteen seventeen.
Yes.
Plan on that date?
Yes.
Yes, you just have to add that. Modified by the applicant.
Okay.
I see.
And maybe, so, E I, can I see that or can I not see it?
You should be able to see this.
So under the display name, um, who feels upon fence, feels upon fence letter line, two thousand seventeen, feels upon landscape, additional fence photo, C O A amendment, that's what I got up. Fence specs, and then the photo's to me, so. Why, um, what am I not doing right?
Should be called screening plan.
Alright, but you keep looking at it, alright, fine.
Yeah, we can see it.
Alright, so you're all happy.
Time change.
Yes, or I.
We're not happy.
We're happy, we're happy, Sue. Alright.
That's good.
Ready?
Can you mark?
Yeah.
Okay. Wait, wait. Who's gonna make the motion?
I moved that, I guess did one before this. Okay, I moved that the scenic road site plan approval amendment for Two Fields Pond Road about the fence and or tree root plantings be, uh, approved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Let's hit on the.
The decisions, now it's just minutes. Steve reviewed nine five, gave me his changes.
So, and children, what's that?
Did anyone do nine twenty six?
Sue was reviewing nine twenty six. Sue, are we good with, uh, nine twenty six? Okay.
So the.
I know you had, you took a look at them, I don't know if you, didn't know if you're done.
Wait, you're both talking at the same time, sorry. Would you say, Sue?
I was just looking, I thought I was just looking at whether Henry Stone would be the person who spoke at a certain point, I, I will review them.
Okay.
Alright, so Steve, you're okay with them?
Yes.
But it was the way approved amendment, nine five eighteen.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'm planning a report. Anything to report, Eva?
Now I'm planning a report. Yes. Okay, upcoming meetings, just note that we have the gap in February, February sixth and twenty seventh are our meetings. I did wanna get your opinion on this, on fifty six car path. They are proposing to remove several large mature trees that they have. And. That's just not square for.
We go, okay, I know we're sixty three car path, so where's fifty six?
Fifty six, let me, okay, let me show you where it is here.
Like oak?
Yeah.
There's a wetlands on that property, right?
There is a wetlands on the property. It is in fact pretty much all within a buffer zone.
Okay. Aye.
So there's green lane, oh, that one.
So, yeah.
I knew that one.
Yeah, it's at the end of green, on the opposite end of Meadowbrook. So, they would like to, they are proposing to take out several trees that are close to their home, like this one and this one. They're all on this plan here. I'm not asking you to make a decision at this point, because there's a lot of them. I do think it's worth a site visit. What I do wanna know is, do you feel that this is a site visit that should be done now? Or do you wanna wait till spring till things leaf out and look better?
Leaf out. That's my vote.
Green.
Sorry, new computer. Anyone else have any?
I agree.
Strong thing?
You can bear to fail another.
Wait till spring to make a visit?
Then you can see how valuable they are too.
Okay. Yeah, they're, they all, when we went out there, looked pretty healthy. And they're, there's nothing majorly wrong with any of these trees, and some of them are pretty large.
Are they, are they in the wetlands buffer?
Some of them are, yes. So they'll have to go through COMCOM as well.
What do you think?
What is the rationale?
The rationale is that they, they feel they're close to their house and may blow down, they're just, yeah.
Delivering in semi-oral land.
Yeah. Okay. That's good. That's direction on that, outstanding. The other thing, Boston Properties, we are getting closer to finishing up the site models, and then we'll move on to neighborhood meetings.
What does that look like in like, coming back to the town to vote on, make comments, whatever?
So we'll take a look at it as a board. I was hoping by, in my best world, by the next meeting on January third, it may be the February sixth meeting after we can get through the neighborhood meetings.
I will write just from my phone, we'll see how it works. That's okay, Steve. It's probably immaterial, I'm just gonna get away, so I'm gonna say goodbye.
Alright.
Bye, Sue.
Good night.
Bye.
Okay.
Ema, any meetings coming up with ALMA for either of the two friendly forty piece?
There will be some coming up, I don't have the dates yet, I'm working on dates with the consultants, and then I'm gonna forward some for you. And that's more gonna be around seven fifty one. I just got a call from Mark on that today.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there any progress on it at all?
Yes, there is progress. There's progress, he's, he's close to.
It's beyond hoping?
It's beyond hoping, yes.
Last three months.
Yeah, he has, it's beyond hoping, he, he's, he's getting into design.
Okay.
Yeah, wow, alright, that's good.
Yeah.
That's what we needed.
Uh, the water master plan, I'm getting, um, I just got the data set for water usage that I'm getting over ten M A P C, so. That will be, we're moving on that finally.
Can you copy me, or at some point I need a download from you for the sustainment committee?
Okay.
So I can just report back to the.
Okay. Alright, and then Metro Common, these are the two plans I'm following. Destination twenty forty is, um, Metro Common Planning Organization's long range plan, that's for a lot, that's basically for traffic and transportation. Metro Common is the MAPC's, uh, regional long range plan to twenty fifty. They had their first, uh, listening session last night, which was pretty cool, I thought. I thought they, I went out to, well, I went to Salem, which was a fun drive. But they did some pretty, they did some pretty neat things that I just wanted to, to share, 'cause I like this kinda stuff.
I mean, there are things in your job description you've actually enjoyed. Hooray!
So they had these ways of like, you know, they had posted notes of like, what bigger forces. I like that almost, you know, there's a whole bunch about climate change here, so I'm glad that's on people's mind. I guess it would be in Salem, you know, they're on the water. They had this thing where you could make collages of what you thought was important with, and probably also to entertain kids. Childcare is one of those things that they bring up a lot in doing a good planning process, that, you know, people with kids need to be able to attend.
Yes.
And then they had this, which was, um, love letters to your town, and some of them were actually kind of funny. One, somebody wrote one to Boston, which said, Dear Boston, you spell very good in the autumn with the fall, but I feel like you don't listen to me when I say I need affordable housing. But they had, they had, you know, a lot of creative ways for the public to engage, and they got them some pretty good wide public engagement, so I, that's very promising to see for the regional plan coming through. Um, so that was your planning minute with Ema.
Yay, thanks.
Bravo, bravo.
Moved your adjourn?
Boy, I.
I moved the wager?
Second.
Second.